This honorable county commission is now open.
Shall we pray? Divine heavenly Father, we thank you for the day that you've given us. We ask you, Father, for the blessings of this meeting and your Father tonight that we might look toward you for strength and guidance. We ask you, Father, for those that we have heard of this week, your Father, that have passed. Dear Father, we pray for their families. We lift them up unto you this night, dear God, that you bring comfort and peace to their hearts. Bless and continue to each citizen across this county, dear Father, that we lift them up unto you for their needs of what it might be, dear Lord, you know. And, Lord, we pray for our troops, that you bring comfort and peace to them and build hedge or safety around them, dear God, as they defend this great country. Pray for provision for their families. Lord, we look toward you for strength, for direction, and for the guidance that we need this hour. For all these favors and blessings, we ask in the name of Jesus. For you are truly the author and the finisher of our faith. Amen.
The question is to be like the United States of America and to be God with all his hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Good to see everyone here. Commissioners, we're on YouTube now, so make sure that A and course channels six, but make sure that when you talk tonight that you use your microphone, because we're having a problem picking you up on the... Picking up your voice. Push the button, we need audio. All right, let's do the roll call. All right, just have a count. Okay, before we prove the agenda, there's going to be some changes. On number eleven on the new business, we're going to pull B and C, those two resolutions, and that's by the request of Mr. West and Ms. Patton. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve...
So moved, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, just have a count. All right, thank you. Has everyone had the chance to look at the minutes? Yes, so I'll take up.
Move to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. All right, just have a count. Ken, if I go too fast for you... Okay, you just have it, because I know you've got to tap it. Okay, are you ready for number seven? We ready?
Resolution 2012-08. Resolution in honor and recognition of James C. Sherrill, deceased from... For his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas James C. Sherrill earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as road sergeant, sergeant of the courts for the Coffee County Sheriff's Department for 28 years. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commends Mr. James C. Sherrill for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it therefore resolved that the family of Mr. James C. Sherrill receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as permanent record passed and so ordered this eighth day of May, 2012.
Move to be approved, Ms. Chairman.
All right, move to be approved. Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. I tell you what, Ken, this machine really is faster than that. It's doing good. Probably shouldn't have bragged on it.
Resolution 2012-09. Resolution in honor and recognition of Lee M. Rose, deceased for his devotion and dedication to the citizens of Coffee County, Tennessee. Whereas Lee M. Rose earned the admiration and respect of the legislative body of Coffee County and every citizen by serving as a corrections officer for the county county sheriff's department for seven years. Whereas his tenure of service was characterized by dedication, fairness, and outstanding service to the people of Coffee County. Be it therefore... Be it resolved, therefore, that the Coffee County Board of Commissioners hereby commands Mr. Lee M. Rose for his outstanding service to Coffee County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved that the family of Mr. Lee M. Rose receive a copy of this resolution and that a copy be maintained on file as a permanent record passed and so ordered this eighth day of May, 2012.
Move to be approved, Ms. Chairman.
Second. All right, will we have any discussion? If not, let's vote, please. Commissioner Thomas and Commissioner Alford. All right, let's have a count. Twenty years, okay. Ms. Patton. All right, let's go to number eight, election appointments and confirmation.
Number is Cindy Clower, Rita Henderson, Ann M. Henson, Melinda Keeling, Clifton N. Miller, Teresa H. Shelton, Charlotte F. Stacy, and Brenda D. Tomlin.
I'll entertain a motion here. Do we accept it?
So moved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. You ready, Ken?
Okay, the railroad authority appointment, and that's a mayor's appointment, and he has replaced Roger Dodson with Tom Rice for the railroad authority.
Move to be approved.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, you might comment about who Mr. Rice is, and that might be...
Mr. Rice on CFC, that is a recycling company that's on the right just before you get to the old armory drive-in and going to Orton Home. And he has... He utilizes this railroad, so I figure he'd be a good one to work with the community and the railroad.
I understand he's a good businessman and a fine gentleman, so we appreciate him, sir.
Yes, that's right. Years ago, he started out with just a container for Coke cans, so he's absolutely a good businessman. That business is really great. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Twenty years, okay. Ms. Patton.
Three, equalization board.
You have the name.
The equalization board has requested the same members speak back on their board. They are Lino Hanson, Boyd W. Jackson Jr., Ronnie Crownover, David Lowe, and Brady Freeze.
Move to be approved, Ms. Chairman.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, we got the count. Yeah, thank you. Okay, item nine, county official standing and special committee. First one looks like jail review committee report, Commissioner Burden.
We have a couple of resolutions in the new business that will be discussed and voted upon. Let's see, the short report is the land has been closed on last week. We just had an issue come before us earlier today about... I don't want to go into it because I've not had a chance to look at it, nor has anyone on the committee, and we have talked about it. There's a little bit of an issue with further environmental studies because of the place where we maybe borrowed a little money, but we'll have to deal with that if we vote affirmatively tonight to move forward, and we'll address that in more detail in the next full commission meeting. We have a 95% plus design, should be a row of drawings right back there. That's where we are. I don't have much more of a report than that.
Does any of the commissioners have any questions for Commissioner Burden? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I just asked committee...
Yes.
I believe in budget finance, and we talked about the rural development loans.
Right.
The most we felt maybe feasible way to finance the jail and deal with it, and we studied in detail a lot of aspects of rural development loans. And in regard to what Commissioner Burden just mentioned, the environmental studies, if I recall, that it's not like additional environmental studies and things beyond what we've done. I believe it was like maybe a 30-day period where they had to have reports submitted to them because it's part of their process for the rural development loans. So I just wanted to maybe mention that so that... And if I'm incorrect, Mr. Burden, you can correct me, but it's not like additional, I believe, studies or environmental studies, it's just a procedural thing with the rural development loan.
I... You... As is very common, I mean, this is a compliment, you're much more well-spoken than I am. I think I did kind of misspeak when I said additional. I really honestly don't know what else involved, because I've just seen the email tonight, but I think you're correct in that it's more procedural issues. What it really come down to, it looks like at first glance, is we'll delay 30 days with their procedural issues, but it's going to let us have access to less expensive money, which will be the right answer for the county, because it'll save us... At the next jail review committee, we'll be discussing this in great detail, make sure that's all that's involved. I think you're right. Any other comments or questions?
I just want to hold a button, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Am I recognized?
Commissioner, I'm not really... I usually just look out at the crap, but I did every once in a while notice that caller.
I was just trying to follow your process.
Well, I know, sir, and you're good about that.
I have a... I guess a quick question for either the chairman of budget finance or Mr. Burden as far as the tax impact from the $22 million and how all we've looked at is for us to pay back for that.
Well, I guess I'm trying to get into it right now, but why don't we get down to the resolutions, because I think those would probably be the appropriate time for those discussions. So rather than repeating them again, maybe, with your call.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept this report.
So moved.
And we got a second. Thank you. Any more discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count.
Twenty years.
Twenty years, okay. Item 10 under unfinished business, we don't have any, so item 11, new business.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Alford.
As chairman of the purchasing commission, I'd like to kind of share with our meeting last night as far as the revision for or the revised... Basically, the committee, the commission took a look at their purchasing policies, and there'll be a forthcoming in the next meeting as far as that, and I want to let everyone be aware, and hopefully that you can get with Roxanne and get... There was really no changes, but we felt necessary that this needs to be a standard practice for the county to do the business and look at our purchasing policies and have those revised each year, so we do want to present that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Patton.
Item 11, new business?
Yes.
A water line extension on Shipley Road. Cost of materials will be $11,000, $11,439 in annual activity.
Commissioner Dunne.
This water line extension is part of Manchester system, and the funding for this will come out of our second half penny motive, the infrastructure budget. And if I recall properly, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's 3,000 foot of 16 foot line.
I think you're right.
But anyway, it's an improvement over the system, and it brings water and fire protection to people who haven't previously had it.
And has it been run through budget finance?
It has. And I'll make this as a motion to approve.
Second, second. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Okay, Ms. Patton.
A budget amendment.
I guess Ms. Mariana, isn't it?
You got to have five budget amendments to read tonight.
Are we going to read them all in just one? If that's okay with the commission? Okay.
First one, 101, 2012-05. Decrease in Chancery Court deputy $1,715. Increase excess fees circuit court $50,594. Increase excess fees Chancery Court $3,109. Increase Homeland Security grant $116,100. Increase IEDCGP communications grant $9,200. Reserve for county clerk $5,107. Reserve circuit court clerk $4,440. Increase 911 impact fees $48,000. Increase in excess of circuit court deputies $1,156. Overtime pay $3,500. Social Security $1,704. State retirement $4,234. Increase Chancery Court personnel $4,824. Increase communications grant $9,200, this is for EMA. Increase EMA department hazardous waste, hazardous materials grant $100. Homeland Security grant $116,000. Increase county clerk's office from data processing reserves $5,107. Circuit court fund data processing reserve increase $4,440. Other public safety overtime pay, this is 911, $12,000. Increase in other boards and committee, boards and committee member fees $9,000. Social Security $6,000, excuse me, $671. Increase county commission mileage $3,500. Increase codes compliance $5,819. Social Security $445. State retirement $200. Insurance $571. Dental insurance $275. Increase county corps medical services $12,000. Increase to unassigned sum balance $3,501. From my budget of finance on April 4th. Is this starting $500 for mileage of county commissioners? Is this starting $500 mileage for county commissioners? Is that extra? Yes. It's because of retail companies. Oh, okay. Next one is 101, 2012-06. Increase property assessor reserves $22,000. Increase honorary drug control fines $6,760. Increase property assessor motor vehicle purchase from reserves $22,000. Increase in drug enforcement for voluntary drug control fines $6,760. The next one is the drug fund, number 122, 2012-07. Decrease in undesignated fund balance of $148,975. Increase in drug control fine sessions court $82,000. Increase in drug enforcement remittance of revenues collected $21,975. Decrease in drug control fine circuit court $130,000. Decrease in proceeds from confiscated property $86,000. Increase contribution in rate and gifts $20,000. The next one, this is the transfer from the Rural Capital Projects Fund. This was included in the Highland Department of 2012 budget, the current budget. Decrease undesignated fund balance of $80,000. Transfer to the Highland Department for the matching for the previous funds. Budget amendment 101, 2012-09. Tax credit bond subsidy $73,380.72. Transfer out to Education Debt Service Fund $73,380.72.
And all of them has been through budget finance?
Yes. They have all been approved.
Yeah, this time I'll entertain a motion to accept it.
Come, move.
Thank you. Second, second. Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Chen.
Just a quick question on the 122-201207. Just get some clarification on the 101, 445, 70 contributions and gifts. What is that exactly?
Read that number again, Commissioner.
It is budget amendment 122-2012-07. Who's that? Second, third, the third one from the end, and it's the line item $20,000 for contributions and gifts.
It was a usually managed report system, I believe. Chef might, you know, change the way it comes through. Fines, court usually will have...
But I can't hear. I don't know if it's my voice creeping in or...
Contributions and gifts, and they... Something usually comes from fines from court.
I think what that line item is referring to is people that go to court on drug charges sometimes has to do drug contributions to drug funds.
Let me clarify a little if I may. There's certain things, you know, the fine may be a certain amount, and the court might not have authority to do a fine for a certain amount, but the defendant may work out an agreement with the prosecutor that if they'll pay a fine and cause, do such, and make a contribution to the drug fund, that has to be done by voluntary action, not by the defendant, and then it'd be called a contribution, because if the court would be specific, not to order if it's just part of the settlement, and if it's a cloud settlement, then they give benefit out of it. It's a means of settlement to bring this condition money for a law enforcement.
Would that not then be under sources of funding or any uses? And I'm not an accountant, so it's just...
Therefore, I can manage to...
It's considered a contribution.
So I guess on clear, it's just a... It's a... When a fine can be given, then someone is given the option to contribute to this fund? What if they don't contribute?
Do what?
What if they don't want to contribute?
Those aren't options.
At that point, it's sixes to be an option.
Right.
Judge couldn't order it based off trial, but settlement if the clue's there.
Any other questions?
Can the... Could the budget director give us the balance so that he could be put into the media verbally so everyone can hear that, please? The intended fund balance, undesignated fund balance?
The drug fund?
No.
Total R fund?
Yeah, air fund. What would be the intended after all the budget minimum? And, Ms. Chairman, the reason I wanted to say that, so that the media and everybody can capture that on audio, and that way the citizens at home, when they don't, they can't see this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. Commissioner Alford.
What's...
Are you voting?
Oh.
Thank you. All right, let's have a count, please. All right, thank you.
It is amended debt management policy.
On page four, the third bullet line down that's highlighted. This was amended at the advisement of our financial, financial advisement. It wasn't there before that we could only do straight line debt. This will let us to also do structured debt as well as straight line.
Move to approve? Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count. Okay.
And Resolution 2012, 2012-12. Resolution to build a new Coffee County Jail.
We'll entertain a motion here to build a new Coffee County Jail.
I'm with Salud.
All right. Now, let's get into the discussion.
Okay. I'd like to say one thing up right up front, that on the first page of this, there's a blank where it says for the specifications and drawings of central architecture dated. It's filled in April 27, 2012. That's the most recent set of official drawings that they have. So for your information, that's what's been filled in.
Any more discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would like to say that I don't know who sent the Channel National News Station down here to enter to see about our jail, but I thought State Guard did an excellent job on demonstrating why our county needed a new jail.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. Oh, excuse me, go ahead, Christian.
Yeah, I would like it. First of all, once we go on this, and Virgil, certainly the financing part probably should be flushed out in the, in the next resolution. But I guess I'm gonna make a little bit of a statement here. Probably inappropriate if I did. Last summer, this commission by a 12 to 9 vote, voted, made a decision to build a new jail away from its current jail site. Again, I'm disappointed with that decision. I still think in the best interest of this county and the citizens, a new jail could have been built on the existing site. And I probably will always believe that. But I joined the jail committee, and I want to commend Commissioner Burke, all the commissioners and citizens that have worked on the jail committee for the last six-plus months. I tried to be as active as I could with that committee, and I watched it. I think all the decisions of that committee were solid, best interest of the county, to build a jail that's certainly not lavish, bare minimum, functional, very, still too very expensive, but no choice. So we're here tonight. I might be the lone vote against this, but, and I'm sure it will pass, but my vote goes back to my vote from last summer, that I still don't think the jail needs to be where it is. Nothing to do with the decision in how the current jail to be built. I just can't get comfortable where it's gonna be built.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Chen. By the way, good to have you back.
Well, thank you, sir. Glad, good to be back. Rush, it probably won't be the only no vote, because I've asked for in the past to get copies of the drawings and having been laid up in the hospital and in recovery for several weeks and not having access to information from the jail committee without having to come up here to get it and never having that responded to in my request. And what I thought was an agreement that we were gonna get copies of that information, I simply can't vote for something I haven't seen and been given the information to provide and spend $22 million of the county money that I have no information on.
I just wanna echo what Rush was saying a moment ago. My vote against this tonight has absolutely nothing to do with the work of the committee. I think they've done an excellent job, given the tools and the resources that they do have. And I think the sheriff's done an excellent job as well. My vote against it tonight is because I don't believe that it's in the best location possible for, for the community. But it has not at all anything to do with the efforts or the work or the intent of the committee. I think they've done a fantastic job. But like I said, I want to echo a lot of what Rush said as well. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. All right, let's have a count.
10 yes, 5 no.
All right. 15 yes, 5 no. All right.
G, Resolution 2012-13. Initial Resolution on the Rise of the Issuance of Not to Exceed $22,500,000. Obligation Bonds for Coffee County.
I'll entertain a motion. Do you accept it?
Please do accept.
Second. All right, thank you. All right, discussion.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to go back to Budget and Finance Director, excuse me, Chairman, and also Mr. Burke, kind of elaborate a little bit on the, the extended cost impact tax-wise and those types of things.
All right, let me try to summarize this, and certainly, Mariana, certainly feel free to jump in. But the current, the best proposal we currently have to finance is $22.5 million. It's for the Rural Development Fund. And the current rates that they have in place is 3.37 percent, three and three eighths, which is an extremely low rate. If we went to the general public bond market, that rate would probably be around four to four and a quarter. So, I mean, that almost, not quite a full percent, but the math on nearly a full percent on $22 million over 30 to 40 years is a saving somewhere between two and, two and a half million dollars present value dollars. So we have the opportunity certainly to lock in some extremely low financing. And of course, we've all been around, this 10 years ago or less, this financing cost would easily have been doubled, because interest rates would have been easily in the 6 percent range, and we might thought those were cheap. So, you know, we can somewhat count our blessings for, for the environment that we're in. Now, that being said, sealed financing $22.5 million, the current estimates will be about $1,600,000 a year in debt service. At 94 cents per penny, that equates to about 11 cents. We have resolutions already in place of the, from, I guess it was last year, to set aside what we refer to as 11 cents money. That seven cents of that will go to this, plus we'll have the funding from the litigation tax revenues, and that's in the neighborhood of, how many thousands?
250,000.
Around 260,000. So if you take the 260 off the million sixty, that's 800,000. And again, that should be about that seven cents number, I think. Is that right, Mariana?
The litigation tax and the seven cents is about $915,000 a year.
Okay, so we're still short somewhere around $150,000. So that, those dollars have been looked at, they're there. They don't, I don't want to get this too complicated, but we're pulling those seven cents out in next year's dollars that we, to do that, it has left the general fund currently in the budget process about a million three short that we'll have to be working on over the next two months to certainly narrow that gap down. But we need in June and July for next year's property taxes, unless that million three shortfall is shrunk considerably, we're facing property tax increases for next year. So we gotta work that out, of course. So I don't want to surprise anyone that, you know, we've got the money in place because our, there's nothing, we don't have some serious budget issues around the corner.
Commissioner Burke, and how much did we start out, the past year, though we was behind, the past year also on our budget process? What was it that we were behind the last time?
About this time last year, didn't?
Yeah, when we were working on budget originally, wasn't it like 1.9 or something?
It was something that, so we've had success in working down budgets, so, but it'd be, so I'm guardedly optimistic we can get there. That means department is coming around, that means scraping up revenues. And again, this is just a general fund. Of course, we, and I don't want to bring the school into it, but we've not heard the school yet, so we've, that's, that's, that's a big issue to, to be prepared for. But anyway, those are the, and again, this is funding. And of course, it's gonna take two years to build, and this money will not be expended all at once. So the funding to get it up and, and, and built should be there. Of course, two to three years from now, when we got operating costs of the new jail, we'll have other issues. So there's, I'm just trying to lay out what I can.
And just for, for the record, the seven cents does not put us to the whole 1.3 million. The seven cents probably generates about 700 and so thousand. So, so the seven cents didn't cause the whole 1.3, just for the record.
Mr. Mayor, may I inject that?
Use your camera.
Resolution that we had for the level debt services required by the Rural Development Fund, and the decision was to take advantage of those lower rates, but at the same time have the school funding go through the public domain. So we do have a, two different funding mechanisms that are going on at the same time.
Does one, does one override or interact with the other, you know, any kind of that verse function?
You mean, putting the school in the jail? Well, the school funds, certainly those monies are sales tax driven revenues too. So, and no, they, they, they do not have any direct effect. I mean, obviously, from a county's general debt obligations outstanding, bond rating companies and other companies will sit there and with the new school and the jail will say, well, we're adding 40-something million dollars of debt to the county's combined tax roll. That has a, a kind of a global underwriting picture, but that's the only impact. But I want to add to what, that, a little bit of what Robbins said. This proposal to use rural funding is a, is a level debt service. So, and we have other general county bonds that are maturing over the next 10 years. And as they drop off, those pennies that were funding that debt service can, one, go to reduce general fund costs, go as a property tax reduction to our citizens, which would be wonderful to, to, so if we don't find other needs for those capital pennies, which I'm not saying we won't, but if we don't, we have some savings coming down the pipe to the citizens in about seven or eight years.
Okay. Commissioner Fan, then Commissioner Heinz. Oh, you don't, okay.
Well, it was just my understanding that four cents is going to that litigation named with Tallahoma, and when it's paid off in, what, two or three years, then that, that four cents could go toward...
You're exactly right, Ms. Mayor. Any other discussion? Let's vote, please. Let's have a count, please. Okay. Okay. Ms. Pat, do you have anything under other? Okay. The next thing on our agenda is number 12, Statement and Announcement. And Mariana told me that I have an announcement here. We applied for USA D loan, USA, USDA Rural Development Loan. And we had to run it in the paper, so it was in the paper when Mariana, a couple weeks ago. Last week, yeah. But anyway, I'm to ask if anyone has any questions about the Rural Development Loan. You ready? It is, is it named J? E H U S D A. Okay. All right, does any other commissioner have an announcement or statement?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to make a statement, please.
Okay.
At the last meeting, there was a little discussion about the inmates of Coffee County Jail washing the mayor's cars, and I said that that had happened in Tallahoma. I spoke with Mayor Curly, this is what I, we spoke on the phone, and then I sent him an email, and I said, "Thank you for speaking with me. Please note that I did not intend any malice in my statement, and also note that your name nor any Tallahoma official was mentioned. My error was that I did not specify that I was not, that I was speaking generally." And as we discussed, sometimes critical words are left out in a statement made, then can come into question. I have the utmost respect for you and your administration, and I feel that you are men of honesty and moral integrity. And I also said, "I don't take my official duty lightly and would not make any callous or untrue statements." We spoke on the phone, and he, he said he understood, and he was not angry, nor did he make any kind of, any other statement than he, he just understood and everything was okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner, announcement or statement? Okay. Does anybody in the audience want to make a short statement? Okay, if not, I'll entertain...
Motion to adjourn?
Well, all in favor, stand up.